Actually live. Hey, everybody. If any of you guys are watching this live or on, this is one of my live one-on-one work sessions and I'm gonna be working with Yvonne. I will not be paying attention to the chat or the comments. I will take a look later if you have a question about something we did. But this is her special hour. I'm gonna be talking on her, but of course, if you need anything, feel free to reach out. You can always find me at Diane at DianeHockman.com. So, Miss Yvonne, tell me about what we're gonna work on today. What are we gonna get down to? The nitty-gritty of it all?
Well, today I'd like for you to help me with the area of transitioning from general chit-chat with a lead and moving that topic onto business and then to closure.
Excellent. And you are using MyLead System Pro for lead generation?
Oh, my. Most definitely, yes.
So, a couple of things I want to teach you. And because we're just getting to know each other, feel free to interrupt me or interact in any way. I know you've been in some of the classes with me, so you know a little bit about my style. Just straight to the point.
Yeah, I like that.
So, I am, as you know, an attraction marketer. I've been an attraction marketer for many, many years now. So, my, I certainly do know how to prospect and have prospected and can prospect, but I generally today don't prospect because I am an attraction marketer. And I'm gonna show you and draw you a couple of pictures because if we're building our list properly and we're getting enough people on the list and we're doing enough promotion, you're generally able to drop offers to the people and have them reach out to you and say they're interested or have them go buy directly as opposed to trying to do those conversations. Because that's the point of attraction marketing. Attraction marketing is sorting through people through systems and tools and letting them either sign themselves up or contact you with questions. So, I think that sometimes the struggle that folks have is they're trying to put it all together in their mind. So, we're gonna draw some pictures and then we're gonna, I'm gonna ask you some questions about where you are and what you are doing on a daily basis and give you some tips and techniques on that and probably talk about how to create effective offers. And let's wanna do regular prospecting, which we certainly can, and we can talk about regular prospecting. But most of the people that are using MyLead System Pro are trying to get away from that, having to approach people and try to get into the place where people are coming to them and/or signing themselves up. Is that true of you?
Yeah, I think maybe I'm getting the terminology wrong. Instead of prospecting, maybe it should be I need to fine-tune my attraction marketing skills.
Yeah, and that's why I want to make sure I take you where you go, but that's usually what people want. Because they wanna, the whole reason why they got into attraction marketing is to get away from having to prospect people.
Yeah.
Again, for anybody that happens to view this at any point in time, there's nothing wrong with prospecting. Prospecting is great, and if you do not have attraction marketing skills and you do not have some of the internet skills, you should be prospecting, but my specialty is teaching people how to not have to do that anymore, which makes it a lot more fun. Because my mentor, the line that he always used was, "I'm looking for people that are looking for me."
Right? I like that line.
I'm not approaching people that weren't looking for me and seeing if they might be open, which again, nothing wrong with. It's very traditional, you know, way of doing it, just approaching people. But I'm actually bringing them towards me and sorting them, and then they're coming to me because they're looking for me. So, let us share my screen. Actually, let's, let me check and make sure I have the right thing up before I share my screen.
Let's see.
That gets messy. Okay. Now, let me come back and share my screen. And if you've been in some of the courses I've done, you might have seen some of this before a little bit, but this way we can do it one-on-one with you and go through.
Okay.
So, the concept of attraction marketing is that we're creating content, videos, audios, posts, memes, live streams, etc. So, these represent all the content and posts, right? Blog posts, any of those things. On social media. And we're bringing people to an environment, usually a capture page. Some people are using Facebook groups nowadays. Some people are using Facebook bots nowadays. But what I call this is a sales environment. And inside of the sales environment, we're sorting the people. Okay? So, right here, this would be your capture page, like a system campaign. If you guys are watching this at a later date and you're not familiar with MyLead System Pro, go find Yvonne. She'll tell you all about it.
I will indeed.
She will be happy to tell you all about it. I've been their top affiliate for quite a few years now. People arrive at your sales environment. It could be a capture page, again, where they're in. It could be a Facebook group that they're joining. It could be Manichat, like a Facebook bot, that they're agreeing to receive information from. And at this point right here, actually, I went in the arrow like this. This is the point where they're giving you permission to talk to them. And when I say talk to them, I mean via media. Okay? So, the difference between prospecting is you're approaching somebody without their permission to see if they're open.
Okay.
Attraction marketing, we're attracting people through the content and things we post online. And it could be ads in, you know, elsewhere as well. It doesn't have to be online. But marketing is when somebody's seeing something and they're following the path that that piece of content lays out. And then they actually say, "I give you permission to talk to me," and they do that by either opting in, right? Putting in their name and email, being in the group, or agreeing to receive messages from a bot.
Right.
Makes sense? So, the permission, this right here, this is the secret sauce. This is the key. Because when you have somebody's permission, like if you walk into a store, and let me stop sharing for a minute so you can see me. If you walk into a store, you've walked in. It's a sales environment. Clearly, they have products all displayed. And the salesperson goes, "Hi, can I help you?" Are you offended by that?
No.
No, you might say, "No, just looking," spoken, you know, but you're not offended because you walked into their sales environment. Now, if you're in the shopping mall and the salesperson runs out of the store into the mall to accommodate you, that's a little weird, right?
That's prospecting.
Yeah, so that would be, "Hey, come on in our store. We have a great offer. Come on in." That's prospecting, trying to get a person who didn't express interest to come inside. Now, sometimes somebody hears there's a great special and they do walk in, right? We can go out and say, "Hey, we have a special sale today, 50% off." A bunch of people might come in.
Right.
If there's a good offer, right? So, prospecting is going towards the person and inviting, right? Attraction is when you have like a window display and the person goes, "Ooh, that dress is beautiful."
Walk in.
See the difference?
Yeah.
So, the person who walks in because they were attracted is generally more likely to buy. And they're also generally, and again, this is from a marketing perspective, guys, just is what it is. They're also generally more amenable to communication because they don't feel like they were accosted, right?
Yeah.
So, now, I got into the industry because somebody prospected me. So, you know, it works. The trees always work. I got into attraction marketing because I had little kids at the time and I couldn't go out to the mall and to here and to there and to the supermarket to try to strike up conversations. I didn't have outlets to strike up conversations, and that's why I got into attracting the leads towards me. I could gain a lot of leverage and spend less time earning the same, if not better, money and still be a mama to my kids. That's how it fits. So, let's go back to this. So, do you follow this so far, this point of permission?
Yes, I do.
So, this would be your blog posts, your videos, your posts on Facebook, anything like that that's directing people to the place where they opt in or agree. They're giving us permission to hear from us.
Yeah.
Right? And then what happens is we start. A lot of times, you know, if you're online, you have, whoops, wrong thing here. I'm not an excellent drawer, but I'm doing my best. We have, you know, once they've opted in, we often have either a thank you page or some type of offer here. Or what we call an OTO, which is a one-time offer.
Okay.
OTO, one-time offer. So, a lot of times people, like it's a free training we're giving away. They say, "Yes, I'd like the free training," and we're giving them the content, saying thank you. Or sometimes we're saying, "Hey, for $7, you can get this, one time only, you can get this free, I mean, get this training, something." But you've seen that before, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then after that, we start following up with them, right? Through, and I put little stars to represent this. It could be emails if they've opted into an email list. We post in a Facebook group, or it could be messages from your Manichat, from your, from your Facebook bot. That, and inside of these messages is where we're showing them our wares, you know, what we have to sell and making offers to them. So, are you following this so far? I'm gonna put it in, in terms of MyLead System Pro for you.
Yeah.
You're following this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Totally on board.
Okay, good. And so, the difference between this and prospecting is I go out on Facebook, I message people, I try to chat with them, and then I try to flip the conversation to, "Would you like to try a 10-day test drive?" Or, "Would you like to try a product?" Okay, so we're, this is somebody's come in and has expressed interest in some type of business topic, of training, etc. And then in our communication, we go, "By the way, we know you're interested in lead generation. Would you like to try our system where you can try it for 10 days for $10 and see all our tools and systems, yada, yada?" So, that's the difference. One is going towards, one is bringing them towards you.
Then I am definitely an attraction marketer then. I'm not a prospector because I don't go out and solicit people.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Right now, let me turn the sharing off. Tell me about, let me get back to, I can see you. I like to see you. Tell me, first of all, I just need to know, where did you grow up? I know in England somewhere, but where?
I grew up, I grew up in, I was born in a town called Hitchin, which is a little village. Then moved to Luton when I was age two, which is 30 miles south of London.
Okay. I haven't been over in a little while, so I'm looking for an invitation. I'm finding out who's where. I haven't been over in a couple of years, so I love it over there. So, awesome. And where do you live now?
I now live in Chicago. Been here nine years.
Okay, okay. Chicago's cool too. All right, so right now, tell me about what you're doing. What do you do on a daily basis for your business? And be like super transparent, like, don't worry because there's, there's no wrong answer or right answer. It's just,
Okay.
It's like you're going to the doctor. I need to know, you know, what hurts, you know, what, what are you doing so that I can give you a little diagnosis?
Right. Every day I post to my Facebook profile. And on there, I do my own content, usually something inspirational. I share from one of my followers, something that resonates with me, that I feel comfortable putting on my profile page.
Okay.
I also have a business page as well, and I have tips on there. I share websites that have interesting articles that they may find useful. Also, there's motivational on there as well.
Okay.
On my Instagram page, I post on there at least three times a day, minimum of. On there, I include MLSP, the system campaigns, the webinars. I don't really put anything on there to sell because I haven't got enough of a following to use the function on there to swipe up or something. Yeah, I haven't got enough of a following to do that. I do have a Twitter. I post on there once and redirect them to Facebook. And I've recently started looking at LinkedIn, but I'm not doing that much on there as yet. I'm still investigating that.
Okay. So, do you mind if we take a look at your Facebook stuff now? Is that me beeping? Something's beeping.
I can turn the volume up on my side if it was me.
No, it's fine. If it, if it was you, that's fine. Nothing's blowing up on my computer. I've been known to blow things up.
Yes, feel free, prefer, yeah.
Okay. Actually, let me stop this. I'm apparently now I'm going to go over to where, there you are. Yeah, none. Two. Okay, now let me turn the share back on. Whoops. Okay. So, let us take a look. I help entrepreneurs, home business owners, leverage social media, mastermind community, Diane, if you want in. I'm just scanning, so give me a second. I'm gonna look at your fan page in a second too. Okay, so tell me, how are you building your list?
Well, I build my list primarily through the offers that MLSP have.
And where are you posting or sharing those so that people locate them and opt in?
I post those within Facebook groups. I post them on my fan page and every now and then on my profile as well.
Okay, very good. How many leads approximately are you getting a week?
Maybe like five.
Yeah, I was gonna say a couple. Okay.
Yeah.
So, let me come back so you can see me again, and I'm gonna give you an idea of what your challenge is.
Okay.
I diagnosed you very quickly. You have lots of nice things, but you're not promoting enough to get people to opt in. And a lot of times what happens is we feel like I don't want to be spammy. Putting stuff all over, all this free stuff or whatever. We do it in groups, which is fine. But on your pages, and again, correct me if I'm wrong because I've only scanned very quickly, so I could, this is just a quick scan. I'm not seeing any actual content. I'm seeing a lot of nice posts and memes and interesting things. But if I were you, I would take each system campaign and I would make a video about it, of you personally talking about the campaign and then off work it out. I would maybe write some pieces about it. I also would go ahead and use the MLSP blog. Do you know how to use that for promotion, to get opt-ins with that?
I was using the blog, but I just couldn't keep up with it, to be honest with you.
Each day, what I want you doing is the first thing we need to do every day, it's really important, is we need to meet 10 people in the space. You don't have to become Facebook friends immediately. You don't have to get them to opt in. You're not trying to do anything. You're trying to meet people. You want to spread your, your net out and meet a lot more people.
Okay.
If you go back through some of the courses, depending on what course you have, I teach different techniques to connect with more people. Usually, for people's conversations, and I do invite you to use my own profile. Because on any given day, I posted something that there's hundreds of comments on. Feel free to join in those conversations, and I will say hi to you and point you out. You can go and look at all the people that liked or, or, you know, gave a heart.
Okay.
Look on the number. You can see all those people that you're not friends with.
That's right.
Follow them if you'd like to, to start to, you know, connect with them. You also can engage in conversations by responding to people. Not, most people respond to whoever posted. Right? Like you just had a picture and it said, "What would you call this burger?" Most people are responding to you. I'd call it the super-duper-whopper, you know, jumbo burger, whatever. Very few people actually talk to the other people that are talking to the poster.
That's true, within the thread, yeah, yeah.
One of the most effective ways to start connecting with people because you, you start bantering back and forth and then you send them a friend request, where you're now familiar. You're not a stranger because you just talked. So, it's like if you came over to my house to a party and people in the corner were talking about a crazy burger they had over the weekend and you were all talking about it, right? If you ran into each other later, they would remember you because you just had a conversation.
Yeah.
So, we want to start meeting more and more and more people. It's all, I mean, every day, I just, I just did it two minutes ago, right before we got on. I was just going through a major network marketer, had a big thread in a conversation, and I was in the thread of conversing with people and adding, you know, adding people and following people that I hadn't met before. It's just simple networking. And it's called network marketing, right, for a lot of us? It's just simple networking. It's meeting people. You don't have to sell them. You don't have to get them. You know, if I worked in a, in an office, I'd get to know everybody in the office. So, imagine that these are all our colleagues and these are all the people that we know.
I think I need to do more of that. I do do it, but not enough.
Everybody does. I, I think that I've counseled that is really, people always say to me, "Oh, Di, you know everybody." Well, I've made an effort. It's not because I'm, you know, so whatever, you know, amazing or anything like that. I'm just a regular girl. It's because I've made an effort to all of my colleagues in the space, in the industry. Now, people go, "Well, why would you want to meet them if you're not gonna sell to that person?" Because by virtue of their interacting on my posts, my posts get exponentially more than most people. So, most people will post something, they'll get a couple likes and two, three. I post something, and I mean, I'll post something goofy and I'll get 150 comments. You know, and that's not even trying. And it's because I've connected with so many more people. And once those people start liking, it gets shown to more people. That's how social media works. Facebook's trying to determine what's relevant to people, and the more interaction you have on your post, the more they think it's relevant to more people.
That's true.
Right? Does that make sense? So, we want to, we want to meet more people. And obviously, when, when, when appropriate, you know, send friend requests or get friend requests, etc. We want to create a piece of content every day and let's select something from the library that MLSP gives you and going to promote that piece of content. So, for example, let's say the system campaign about storytelling, which is mine. I was, right? Let's say you pick that. You might be putting that in several groups, but you might also go on your Facebook wall and talk about the importance of storytelling. Or in this case, you actually had a live session with me, be able to say, "I just spent a, you know, I just spent an hour with Diane Hockman." You know, whatever your experience is, share it genuinely. There's a great free training that she put together on storytelling. I think you might like it. Remember, you're identifying and you're, and you're promoting, but what's happening is you're getting that lead. You're getting that lead. And you can do that with any of the Facebook, I mean, any of the system campaigns. You can do that with any of the blog posts. Pick a blog post. You just have to make sure you know how to make your link properly.
Got it.
So, you're gonna do a little video or you're gonna do a little write-up about, you know, whatever the, let's say the blog post is about using Facebook bots. You might put something like, "I'm considering using a Facebook bot for my fan page, but I haven't really decided yet. Does anybody have any experience with it? I just read this article, thought it was powerful, but looking for your opinion." Right? When you do something like that, tons of people are gonna go look at the article. You're gonna get leads, but you're also engaging with lots of people. So, you're using the content that's been provided for us to promote and have conversations and/or creating our own. You may decide to do a video or you may do a Facebook Live. And a lot of people do a Facebook Live and then it's over and they're done. They don't promote it. They don't come back and remind people to go back and take a look at it. They don't share it in groups properly. So, what people don't realize is they feel like they're working, but they've really had very, very little exposure.
Yeah. I think with me, because I do promote the MLSP campaigns, but it's just hard copy, just a picture that I've created myself and some wording, and that's what I post. I've never actually considered doing a video about the system campaign and then promote the system campaign on the back of it.
Yeah. I mean, there's nothing wrong with doing it just basic, but that's just kind of like a little ad and it's not gonna catch people's attention as much as if you actually say something about it. It's cool. I think there's like 30 system campaigns. You can go and, all of them, and then you can recycle and reuse that same video again next month or in different groups. And or, it's easy to make another video or write another little piece because there's 47,000 aspects of storytelling. See what I'm, you know what I mean? So, you can use the same campaign, but talk about it differently.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I did consider that.
So, one, we need to connect with more people and we need to use, if we're going to use existing capture pages and content done for you, we need to add ourselves to it and/or we need to create our own content and have our own through the finalize or create your own capture page or your blog, whichever you want, so people can opt in. So, when I, content, right? When I do something, I'm always saying, "Hey, and, and guys, if you're interested in my newsletter, go over to DianeHockman.com," right? I'm just constantly pointing. I, I could easily point. I could take all this. Do you have a blog set up yet or no?
I have got it set up, but like I said, I don't use it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great way to use it though. Do you have a domain name mapped to the blog?
Yeah, yeah. I was gonna change the, the theme of it because I thought it looked a little bit tired. It wasn't exciting. So, and then to find articles to write as well.
To a trick, that even if you don't use the blog, I'll teach you a trick. What's your domain name for your blog?
It's just Yvonne, www.yvonhockian.com. That's all.
Perfect. So, you can take, there's something inside of your blog called Pretty Links. Allows you to forward, how do I explain this? I could say, Yvonne, how do you say your last name? Hockian?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. So, hockian.com/storytelling, you can set that up. So, now, if you're making a little video and you want to send people to the storytelling system campaign, the domain, instead of having to use that big, long link that they give you at MLSP with the, you know, your name, dot, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever.
All right, yeah.
Set up all the campaigns so that your domain name from your blog points to the campaigns. So, you also can do that with other affiliate programs or things. You're posting, like I, I could say, "Oh, go over to DianeHockman.com/MLSP" if you want to get a test drive, right? And I set that up in advance. It's really effective because I'm always able to say to someone, "Well, it's, it's at YvonHockian.com/Mannichat" or, or whatever that may be. It's called Pretty Links. It's inside your blog. Even if you don't really use your blog and you don't send people directly to it, it's a lot more professional-looking and it's yourdomainname.com/whatever you'd like to call that campaign. You following me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can slow down. If I go too fast, please stop me.
No, that makes sense. I, I've seen it on the blog, in the, in the dashboard. I've seen the Pretty Link thing there, yeah.
So, if you're, if you're, let's say you're doing a Facebook Live, like right now, we happen to be on YouTube Live, right? And I'm like, "Hey, guys, you know, if you, if you're interested in MLSP, just go over to DianeHockman.com/MLSP." So, I can rattle it off. I don't have to remember, like, there's 30 campaigns and on the blogs, there's 4 million links and you can't remember all of that. And so, then it's kind of like, "Oh, let me find the link." But if you actually take a couple hours, it doesn't even take that long, but you know, depending on whether you're used to this or not, might take you an hour or two, set them all up as links. Might take you an hour or two, set them all up as links.
Mm hmm.
Now you're able to post on demand, like, um, have you learned to tell your story properly? Storytelling is an incredibly important part of your business. If you have free training, go to YvonneHockian.com forward slash storytelling. So you can start handing these out like candy faster and easier. And it feels more like you're just trying to help someone versus, you know, copying and pasting in Facebook groups.
Yeah. I like the idea of that. And it also kind of brands myself a little bit as well.
Exactly. And, and even on Instagram, you can do an Instagram story. Hey, it's Yvonne and I was just talking to my friend Diane and she has a great training about story. I'm using me because I know that one. There's tons of trainings.
Yeah.
Um, you know, she has a great training on storytelling. I thought you really might like. You can go to myname.com forward slash storytelling and grab it. So even if you don't have the swipe up yet. Anybody can see your name on your account.
Mm hmm.
So it's much easier for them to type it in. It is branding you and it looks nice.
Yeah.
So one, meeting more people and getting more comfortable with just, hi, how are you? What do you do? A lot of people are very weird because they think they're jockeying to sell someone something, you know?
Yeah.
Where I'm out just meeting tons of people because I'm looking for people that are looking for me, right? I'm meeting and connecting with them on social. Then I'm posting content and information and links to things that I think would be helpful to people.
Yeah.
And by doing that, and I've already connected with a lot of people and now I'm always posting stuff. People are starting to click and hit and end up on my list. I also do have my own. Uh, opt-in set up for my own personal newsletter, which I'm always referring to. You cannot watch one of my videos. Or go to any of my stuff without me saying, hey, DianeHockman.com, make sure your name and email's in there. Make sure you're on my list. Make sure you're on my list. The reason why you know about this offer for these wonderful sessions is because you happen to be on my list.
Exactly, yeah.
And I haven't put it out in public on purpose because there's too many people. I can't handle them all. So these are some fun ways. And when we're, if we're going to either use existing content or create content. We can't just drop it and leave it. We have to promote it. Come back and talk about, so excited Sally just got the training on storytelling. You might've missed it if you did, go here.
Yeah.
So it's easy to come back and make another post. It's easy to come back and, you know, put a picture of Mother Goose reading a story. It's easy to come back and talk about some people that you know that grabbed that training. And say, hey, you know, Johnny got the training. It's very cool. So it doesn't, again, it doesn't feel so much like I'm another person posting another thing to try to get you to come to my list so I can sell you stuff.
Mm hmm.
You're truly energized and excited about the content you're sharing, whether your own or something that was created for you.
Yeah.
That make sense?
Yes, yes.
And I'm always running around, like today I did an interview for a, a digital summit. Uh, Danny, in fact, he happens to be an MLSP member, friend of mine. Danny asked me if I'd be part of his summit. I said, absolutely. So then he published the information and I went and shared with everybody. Here, go check this out. Now I don't get the opt-in in this case. It's Danny's summit. When I voted his summit for him and I agreed to be part of it, he's going to get those leads.
Yeah.
But my audience perceives that I'm always promoting and sharing, so they don't feel like I'm coming to get them when I actually do have a sales offer. Makes sense?
Yeah, because with my emails, the only thing I promote in my emails, and I only send them out once a week, is usually, um, the Wednesday webinar. I don't do anything other than that to bombard people.
And that's, that's part of, another part of your challenge. Um, the, the point of the Wednesday webinar, it's great to serve people so that they can come and learn.
Mm hmm.
The other point of the Wednesday webinar is so that you can generate leads and the people that are on your list are already a lead. They're already in there, right? So when we write the list, we want to be writing that list much more regularly. And the, yup. Now I'm going to, you're going to hate me, but if you want to get any good at it, I would do it daily for ninety days and you're not bombarding. Let me, you don't have to do that if you're working full-time. Don't worry, but, um. I always say, if you want to get good at something, do it as much as you can quickly. Um, because if you only write once a week. And there's only fifty, fifty-two weeks a year, you've only written and, and you probably will skip some weeks because it's the holidays or something.
Mm hmm.
Fifty letters in the whole year. You can't get very good if you only write fifty letters, right? Same thing if you, if you're videos, if you only do one video a week. It's going to take a long time for you to get pretty good. That's why I will pick something you want to master and do it super consistently for ninety days. I could write a sales letter in my sleep, hanging from my toes. Again, it's not because I'm so talented. It's because when I decided to master email and sales copy, I dove in. So pick, like right now, you might decide, I want to focus on meeting people. And I'm going to take the next two weeks and I'm going to meet as many people without, without trying to sell them anything, just meet as many people as I possibly can. And get good at that. Then you might take another two weeks and you might decide, I'm going to work on some of the content ideas we just talked about. I'm going to post and promote pieces of content conversationally. Until I had to get maybe twenty leads a week, if you're only doing like five right now. I'm going to do that for a couple of weeks and I'm going to get good at generating leads, okay? Then you might decide, I'm going to really work on my newsletter writing skills. And I'm going to take the next couple of weeks and I'm going to really focus on writing. I'm going to write three, four, five times a week. You don't have to forever. But if you want to get good at something, you want to condense the process and focus on it. Because what I find is most people, they're kind of all over the place. And so they're doing lots of stuff, but not getting any traction because they haven't mastered any of the skills.
Yeah.
That make sense?
Yeah, I think that might be me at the moment. I'm trying so hard on many different aspects of, um, marketing and traction marketing that it's not all kind of gelling together just yet.
Mm hmm. And that's where we have to look. Let's go back to this. This picture is critical that you grasp this. You have to have a way to collect people to get their eyeballs. This is the content promotion. We have to have a way to capture them, right? Get their email address or get them permission to talk to them. We have to have something to give them. Once they're in, and then we need to be able to follow up with them. And this is our communication, our ongoing communication. So think about it, if you posted in a group and somebody goes, ooh, that, that looks good. They put in their name in their email, they get their little training. You're only once a week inviting them to the webinar and you're never telling them about what you have. And/or any other aspect of what you're working on, they can't possibly buy from you. Wouldn't say that they don't want to. They just can't because you haven't given them that option or shown them what you have.
Yeah, they, um, I need to give myself more exposure. Then definitely the more than once a, once a week.
For sure.
Yeah.
And the way we do that, now granted, if you do get them on the Wednesday night webinar, you can get a sale. Sometimes we're selling something on the Wednesday night, but more often it's just a training. So if I'm going to invite them to the night webinar, I would do a little write-up about who's teaching and what the lesson is about. And say, and once you've watched the webinar, if you'd like a ten-day test drive of our system and like to jump on the Zoom with me so I can walk you through. Go click here and get it. You have to make sure you're, you're giving them the chance to go get what you're selling. Okay?
Okay.
The reason why I've done so well in MLSP is because I'm constantly going, get a ten-day test drive, get a ten-day test drive. Hey, did you try it? Try it out. See if you like it. Maybe great for you. I don't know if it's great, but I don't care whether they stay or not. I want to get them a test drive. And I, I mean that sincerely because I'm looking for people that are looking for me.
Yeah.
Somebody might try it and they really can't handle the computer stuff. It's too much for them. They're not, it's not a fit for them. Um, I might get somebody else on the door. They fall in love with it and they stay for years and I make a beautiful commission every month for years, which is what I have done.
Mm hmm.
But I'm constantly, so all I ever do is meet people, invite them to my newsletter or to opt in somewhere.
Mm hmm.
And then I'm always saying, hey, would you like to try a test drive? Would you like to try it, try a test drive? With my network marketing company, it's the same thing. We have a little seven-day trial. So I'm always like, hey, it's seven, why don't you try it? If it's a good fit for you, see if you like it. That's all I do. And then based upon their reaction to what they tried, I upgrade them. So it's not a big, you know, you gotta get in, it's a million dollars. Bring your blood or anything. It's just like, hey, let's get you in there, take a look around, see if it might be helpful to you. Let's get you to try the product, see if it feels good, see how you feel after a couple of days and see if it's a fit, if it makes a difference for you. If not, no worries. That's my whole attitude. Now I'm a little different than some other people. A lot of other people are like, you gotta close it. You gotta get their money now. I don't look, even these sessions, you know, are very reasonable because. Uh, one, it's good. I'm being lazy and doing content and, and getting to know someone at the same time, you know? So I made a couple of dollars, not what I may usually make when I'm working with clients, but I made a couple of dollars and I'm creating my content all at the same time.
Yeah.
Two, there's a good chance that somebody who comes through this process will go, she really helped me. I want to hire her for more. I'm not looking for that. That wasn't, that's not my intention.
Mm hmm.
There's, I mean, I already had one of the girls that did a session yesterday. She's already like, what do we do? No. Um, another person might come on, we do a session and they're like, she's crazy. I stand her, she's all over the map. No harm, no foul. We had a nice hour. So. So, and, and, and that's the attraction marketing attitude. I'm not a fit for everybody. My Lead System Pro is not a fit for everybody. My MLM is not a fit for everybody. Other affiliate things I sell are not a fit. My courses are not a fit for everybody, but for some people, they're perfect. My job is just to locate and sort through all the people to figure out who those people are.
Yeah, I think I need to do that because, um, not every, I do offer MLSP. But, um, it's usually in writing, so perhaps I should do that one-to-one, like a phone call or something like that.
We can. I mean, you certainly can follow up with your lead directly.
Hmm.
And there's nothing wrong with that. I personally don't because I generate a lot of lead.
Yeah.
So I focus on the lead generation and letting the system sort them. But if you're only generating a few leads and you want to reach out to the people personally, you certainly can. Do you have a signature file? Do you know what a signature file is for your emails?
Yeah, yeah, I've done that with your course, um.
Your signature file? Do you have any links in there for them to take a look at your, your social media and perhaps?
Yeah, I set that up with, um, the, the last previous course that you just did. Yeah, that was lovely. Yeah, I've set that up.
Great. So I would say that you just need to get more comfortable, matter of fact, with mentioning ten-day test drive, ten-day test drive. Um, in your, you know, when you offer a training, say, if you love this training. We have a whole back office full of them. If you'd like to take a look at our marketing system for ten, ten days. See, so it's just very, it's like at McDonald's, they say, well, I think they stopped doing it, but they, they would always say, you know, would you like fries with that? Or would you like to supersize it? Or would you like to add coke? It's because it's a, it's just a standard, would you like this? There's no emotion. I don't really eat fast food, but if I did, I wouldn't be emotional if they offered me fries with my burger. Just say, oh, I'd love that, or no, thank you.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be, you know, when, when the waitress comes over in a restaurant and says, would you like dessert? Would you like to see the dessert menu? Some nights I'm like, yeah, bring it on. I need some chocolate. Other nights, you know, I'm full or I'm trying to not eat dessert. So I'm like, oh, no, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm, it's not offensive. So we need to get into the mode. Oh, if you'd like a training on lead generation, you really might want to check out our test drive. That's not so much selling as it's pointing out that there's something else available. Follow?
Yeah.
In your content, can be done in your videos, on your Facebook Lives, it can be done in your written content. Here's, you know, here's a blank tra, you know, training on XYZ. If you like this, let me know. I have a whole back office full of incredible training like this. Matter of fact.
Casual, yeah.
Yeah, it's just constantly, but it's, it's casual, but it's consistent. So there's nobody that doesn't know what I do. So if you looked at your Facebook, uh, profile and page. I kind of, I mean, I know it says over here what you do, like in your little description, but based upon your content, I don't know what you do.
Yeah.
I don't know whether you sell hamburgers or whether you're professional speaking or whether, follow what I'm saying?
Mm hmm.
So we want to make sure that people know what you do. And that would be through all of these communication channels that you have. You're going to get them in through your content. Once they're inside of your, you know, your list or your newsletter, however you like to call it. You should be communicating with them about different things that are available.
Yeah, I need to step that up because I, I do communicate with them, but not, uh, really promoting other things within the back office that I can offer.
Let me show you one other thing. I think that's going to make a difference. Again, real quick. You can see my screen right now?
Yes.
Okay. I want you to remember too. You have obviously the offers for my Lead System Pro.
Yeah.
Are you, um, what kind of member are you?
I'm professional.
Okay, great. So the profit campaigns, okay, you have a couple of great ones in here and these actually yield a commission. Okay? This one, the Attraction Marketing Bundle Summit Upsell. Show you. Is actually a great little campaign, okay? Um, sixty-eight page, all-inclusive ebook. They get a MP3 audio book. And a roundtable mastermind with twenty top earners, right? It's a dollar. I think you make ninety cents or eighty cents on it, right?
Mm hmm.
But what happens, and, and they also, you can offer them a free month of MLSP. Whoop, where'd it go? So for a dollar, they can get this content plus fourteen days of MLSP. Fourteen days to check out the system. So it's actually a better deal. This campaign is a better deal than the ten-day test drive.
Yeah.
Because it's, you get an ebook, an audio book, a roundtable mastermind. It's a dollar. Check this off and you can check out the system for fourteen dollars, right? So somebody pays a dollar. And then when they get inside, they get offered something more, which would be an upsell or a one-time offer. But for, right? And you're going to make eighty or ninety cents on it because this is a profit campaign.
Mm hmm.
People use this campaign and it's a great little campaign. So all of these in here. Oh, whoops, let me close that. This one, right? Social Ads Made Easy. Okay? It's free if you get a ten-dollar test drive, a ten-dollar test drive.
All right, yeah.
It's seventeen dollars if you don't want the test drive or it's free with the test drive.
Mm hmm.
Right? So if they, actually if they buy it for seventeen dollars, you make like ninety percent of the seventeen. If they do the test drive, you're going to make your regular percentage. Um, but you know, your regular percentage based upon your, your leadership rank. But.
Yeah, yeah.
These little campaigns are wonderful whether they're out in public that you're promoting them. And you do a little, do a little, um, piece of content about it. So like on this one. I might make a little video about, I was confused about getting fresh prospects to talk to today. And then I found this course, the Attraction Marketing Bundle. I got an ebook, I got an audio book and I got access to a roundtable with twenty of the top earners in the industry. It was only a dollar. I learned so much. A little video, little written piece, whatever the case may be, with the link. And now people start going, oh, that sounds good. And it's only a.
I mean, I have used it, but I've used it just as a static. I haven't done like a, a little promo beforehand and then offered it. So that's where I've been falling down.
You haven't added you.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to encourage you to do, to add you. Because when you get in here and realize how many things you have to sell, because you also have the product campaigns.
Mm hmm. That's right.
With all these different products, which are actually products for sale, you know, you know, all these different courses and things we have available. Now I would offer the courses inside, once people have given me permission and they're inside my list. These are things that I might offer in my list. The system campaigns and the profit campaigns I might offer out in public.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Um, and the reason why is because the the system campaigns are just free giveaways. Right? You're familiar with them.
Yeah.
Off the campaigns, there's a couple of them in there that are so inexpensive, like the dollar one, et cetera. Um, but when we add ourselves, really add ourselves to the marketing. That's whoops, wrong button. Hang on, let me come back to you. That's when the magic starts to happen.
I think you're right. When I look at my uh, my profile, my business page and Instagram. It all looks really nice and pretty.
It does not.
It's not getting me anywhere. Yeah, I need to inject a little bit more of me into it.
It's, it's really that simple. There's only, the beauty of attraction marketing is there's only one of you. You know, there's tons of people that, you know, in MLSP alone, there's lots of people who have access to the same campaigns. In MLM and the MLM I'm in, there's thousands of people that have access to sell the same products. But there's only one of me. And that's what I do when I'm out there in the marketplace. I'm adding myself to the equation of it all. Copying and pasting and all that stuff. It's good to learn and to start and to, you know, I start people off with baby steps, just generating their first leads because it's exciting. It's like I generated a lead. But the lead that likes you is a hundred times more valuable than the lead that opts in for a free training. If they opt in for free training from Yvonne and then they know that Yvonne is going to message somewhere that you're on the other side of the email and they can write to you or they can message you on Facebook and they know who you are. That's where the magic really happens and we have to put ourselves out there a little bit in order to have that thing happen.
Yeah, I think I've been very hesitant to um, use the medium of video.
Okay. Let's talk about why.
Oh, I don't know. I just, I just don't think I'm very, I I have done it in the uh, the last, the really last big campaign was for um, LinkedIn. And I braved up myself and I did two videos on there for the, because it ran over two weeks and I did get a lot of response back for that, but it it takes me time. So I I I can't do live, I don't think, because I just fluff it up all the way along. Um, so I do recorded and the, what I actually put out was was half decent. And I got quite a lot of feedback and a lot of leads from that. So it does work. I just need to do it more.
Mm hmm. Um, question, have you been nervous while we've been doing this?
No, I know, I, I don't know you, but I know you. If you know what I mean.
Right. And 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 you're having a conversation with me and sometimes people, because I've been around for a long time, they they get nervous about me. I hope you're not because I I'm a pretty normal person.
Yeah.
You're on video right now. We're live. Are you nervous?
No, because I'm talking to you.
You know what I was going to suggest? Want to buddy up with someone? And do some of this work as conversations. If you buddy up with somebody else from MLSP, you guys can have a conversation perhaps about a system campaign or about a topic. Um, and then both of you can use the video. I don't know if you have Zoom. You can
Yeah, I'm linked to Zoom.
With a free Zoom account, you can get on with another person. Um, if you don't have the big Zoom account, you can't broadcast live with it. But even if you have a regular Zoom account, two people can get on, just like we've been doing. Have a Obviously, in this discussion, I'm the teacher and you're the student.
Yeah.
We wanted to do a promotion together. And let's say we wanted to promote my system campaign about storytelling, right? We could get on and um, have a conversation together about the importance of storytelling. Five minutes, not even. And then go, if you'd like to get the storytelling training, check out the link that's below this video. Then both of you take the video and use it. Because when you're with someone else and conversing, it doesn't feel like it's you talking to air. One of the tricks, if you watch almost any of my webinars, the courses, some of them I have to do that way. But if you catch me on a webinar, I'm always going to have someone with me. Always have, whether I have some students with me, whether I have a colleague with me. I always have somebody with me because it's a lot easier. Why do you think I'm doing these things this way? I could sit in a training and sit here and look in the screen and go live and go blah, 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 blah. But it's a lot more fun when you have somebody with you and when you're teaching something in real time, it's more it's more effective for folks. So if you're sheepish of doing it by yourself, I highly recommend doing it with a buddy.
I think that would work perfectly because then you're just striking up a conversation. You're talking about a particular subject and the flow is a lot easier. It's not static. And I probably wouldn't even need to use any notes, which I need to use if I'm doing it on my own.
Yeah, you probably wouldn't, just a couple of bullet points. One of the tricks you can use too is every week, watch one of those system campaigns with a buddy and then the little video together where you discuss the training. Now those trainings tend to be a little long. So it is a little time consuming to continue.
They're not like your trainings at all. Your trains are nice and nice and small.
I, you know, I used to do the long trainings. And then I realized that it was so much easier for people if I gave them a snippet. So we changed the format. At the last two courses. If you go back to one of my original courses, they're like two hour long webinars. It's a lot. I'm ADHD. I'm somebody who has trouble consuming too much at a time. Formats always been this way in the industry. So then I was like, well, I'm going to do it a different way. And at first everybody was kind of like, what are you doing? You know, you can't do it that way. And I was like, well, actually I can. So
Watch me.
And I do snippets. I can do them on my own. If I'm doing something longer, I almost always have a buddy. Um, and it could be that you're just discussing the topic of lead generation or you're discussing the topic of Facebook ads. You're and you're together with someone um, and then saying, well, hey, here's a free training. Let's all check out the train. Um, and so now it becomes more conversational. Less nervous.
Yeah.
When I see somebody talking to somebody, I'm not nervous. When I'm, if you make me go and do PowerPoint slides and all that type of stuff, I get freaked out. I have, a lot of people teach really well like that. You know, they have their whole slide deck and it's a, it's a prepared talk. I'm much better conversing. So each person has to figure out what feels good to them. Um, that's a little trick that you can use and we couldn't do that not long ago. We didn't have software like this. I'm using StreamYard right here. Zoom is incredible because everybody can get a free Zoom account. Everybody can record on Zoom. So it's very accessible. It's a very easy way. Um, I just had a student, partner student, somebody who isn't terribly internet savvy, but a brilliant person. And they were like, giving me a hard time about doing some video. And so without them even knowing it, we were on Zoom. And I said, well, let's talk about this. And I hit record. And then I'd stop the recording and I go, you just made your first piece of content. And they're like, what? And now I'll edit, you know, I'll, I'll just put it up and 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 they were like, what? And I said, no. And I I took it and I put it like in a hidden place so they could watch it. Like, that was really good. And I said, it's not, it's just not that hard. It's our mind.
Yeah.
You say when people, our mind makes us feel funny about meeting people because in the back of our mind, we're thinking, I gotta get them. What if you didn't have to get them? What if you were just swerving people to see who might be, you might be able to help? Then everything changes. Because it's no longer, I'm meeting you with an agenda. It's I'm meeting you to meet you.
Yeah.
Somebody meets you, they're more likely to share your content. They're more likely to comment on something that you posted. They're more likely to like and put little hearts and all kinds of stuff on your media. When that happens, Facebook goes, oh, this is relevant. They show it to more people. So I'm doing the same amount of work as everybody else, probably less. But I'm getting
More exposure.
More visibility.
Yeah.
Having more people at the same time.
Yeah, I could do this concept. I know somebody I could do this concept with and I think it would be beneficial to both of us because I think we're kind of in the same boat. So I think it would work very well.
You know, the first one that you do, don't even promote a system campaign or anything. Just get on with someone and say, you know, I did a, I did a workshop with Diane Hoffman the other night. And she suggested that we do content as a team and I thought that'd be really fun. So I got Sally to come on with me. And we're going to talk about blankety blank. Right? And tag me because if you tag me, it'll get seen by lots of people. And that would be fun.
Well, thank you.
Probably I will promote it if you go ahead and do something like that. And do the first one without trying to get leads. Just have some fun and loosen up. Get comfortable and or just try to get them to be on your newsletter, you know, um, whether you fix up your blog or whether you just set up a little capture page. Or you can always ask someone for their email address. Hey, message me your email address. I'll put you on my newsletter. Put them in manually.
Yeah, I've got the uh, the A Webber app for that. That's a very good app.
So say, hey, I'm still working on my blog. It's like, because everybody's so worried about people will judge them. I say all the time, I like, I had my blog was recently infected. It was down for like six months. Everybody's like, how can you live without a website? I just told everybody, give me your email address. I'll put it in. And I put them in on Adam.
Yeah, yeah.
So um, real simple stuff. So I'm kind of hoping that some of this was helpful to you.
Indeed, indeed. I, the bottom line um, that I've taken away here is um, what I do at the moment is good, but it can be better. I need to um, put my face out there more so people get to know me. And I sort of stand out compared to a static post that I always do. Um, and just when people get
That you're offering things. Is offering things, right? So check yourself, be visible and always be offering a system campaign, a trial membership. Uh, anything that you can offer, like I told you, I offer things from other people that I don't even make money on or credit or get the lead for. But people always see me recommending an offering, recommending an offering.
Yeah, that's a great takeaway.
To close out the session, for any of you guys that watch this, if you happen to have watched this live or at a later date, if you're interested in doing one of these one on one sessions, message me over at Diane at DianeHawke.com. Ta-da! See, I just did it right in front of you. They are going on a limited basis, but if you are interested, definitely reach out um, or leave me a message here on YouTube and I'll get back to you. That wasn't rough, right?
Yeah, it's easy.
Hundreds of people might watch us, maybe even thousands, but there might be four or five that are looking for a session. I'm not working, I'm not offending anybody that just wanted and it's good value to help people. And by the way, thank you for being just in deciding to let people observe our work together. Um, because I think it helps a lot of people
Yes.
to see these type of sessions versus just a, a training. Um, doing something real time and just let me know. Feel free to start tagging me in a couple of things on Facebook as you start to do some of this stuff. Um, and or if I see you going by in the feed, I will be sharing some of your stuff. It's okay with you.
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, Yvonne, I'm really glad I got to see you and um, you're, you're going to do great. Really, we just, just had you.
Yeah, I just need to fine tune a few more things and I think I'm there.
I think you're there too. And I think that um, that's it. We just need to be comfortable and loving on people. I'm not trying to get anybody, anything from anyone. I'm trying to give something to people. And when we shift that, uh, one of my mentors called it the gift shift, right? When you shift to knowing you're giving out a gift as opposed to um, I'm so happy that somebody introduced me to my lead system pro seven years ago, whatever it was. And so somebody introduced me to the industry. Um, I'm just always out there offering and sharing and giving and seeing who wants to buy something that I happen to offer. And then I do make a living from it. But my, my, my agenda isn't, isn't to get. My agenda is to give.
To give, yeah.
Yeah. And and when you create content like that and when you, it it lets you let go of the fear and or being self conscious and it lets you get into really feeding into people. And when people feel that that's who you are and that's what you're doing, they come to you. They come to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Session right after this. Thank you, thank you. And it will be available on my YouTube channel. You can come back and rewatch it anytime you want. If you need me to pull it down and give it to you privately, let me know. I'll take care of it.
Okay. All right. Thanks, hon. All right. Okay. All right. Bye.
Bye bye.